Okay, it is six o'clock. The meeting of the February 5th Monday night Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order. We do have a quorum. And Dr. Frederick may be joining us. I can't hear him right now, but he has a link to join. I'd ask, right now, that we have a moment of silence? Thank you. Our vision as a school system is every student will reach his or her full potential, prepared to thrive in a changing world. In our mission, we empower every student, every day. Would ask Dr. Lindsay if she will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the principle of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. We're now at item two, the announcement of changes to agenda as needed. Do we have any changes as needed? Do we need to go ahead and adopt what we have?
Motion to adopt. Adopt agenda?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
The agenda is adopted as presented. The next section of our agenda is communication and community. And Dr. Winborn will now give his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And good evening to everyone, board members, team members, and those in attendance and joining via video. It's hard to believe we're in February, that we are now well past the halfway point of the school year, only about four months of school left. And since we last met, I've spent a lot of time listening and observing. I've held my superintendent advisory council meetings with parents, principals, teachers, and students. I've visited every school several times and completed mid-year meetings with all of our principals. Excuse me. Steve's coming on. And I've been reviewing the recent mid-year focus survey that was shared with our Granville County Public Schools staff. And we had nearly 500 of our educators respond to that survey. So it was a tremendous response. And I look forward to sharing the results of that survey with our board and our staff. There was some excellent feedback that they provided about our district's progress through this school year, very valuable information. But my big takeaway from all the listening and observing and feedback that I've been gathering is that while there's plenty of work that needs to be done, we're seeing a collective effort to really embrace and concentrate on the main priorities that we've set forth for this school year. And those are safety, academics, student behavior, and attendance. And if, I think that we can continue to make some significant progress in these areas with this sort of collective buy-in, that this momentum that we're building as we move forward. And I predict we're going to see some improved outcomes for our students. On a separate note, I'd like to thank the Granville County Board of Commissioners for joining our board recently for a very productive joint meeting to discuss the 24-25 budget. And for those of you who are not able to join us, we presented the top priorities for the coming fiscal year, 24-25, as we face some serious budgetary challenges. I certainly am making it a top priority to protect and strengthen the resources that are closest to our schools, closest to our schools. And I'm also aggressively going to advocate for increasing the local supplement for our school-based certified and classified staff, supporting our educators, those that work with the children every single day in our schools. Of course, all these details are going to have to be worked out with our board and the administrative team in the coming weeks and months. But I'm very excited about our ability to work so closely with our county commissioners. And I think it was a great meeting. Before I close, I just want to recognize that this is, this week is National School Counselor Week. So be sure to give those school counselors a hug and some love for all the hard work that they do every day with our students, if you get a chance. Also, of course, February is Black History Month and it's Career and Technical Education Month. So we have a lot happening. And I know that our teachers and our students will be doing a lot of activities around these two themes, and they're going to be showcasing it a lot. So be sure to take advantage of that. I look forward to a very productive meeting tonight. And at this time, I'm going to defer back to the board chair for her remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. On behalf of the Granville County Board of Education, I'd like to welcome each and everyone in attendance here tonight, and also those joining us by live stream. Tonight's agenda is full with business and reports that relate to our areas of focus, as Dr. Winborn said, safety, academics, behavior, and attendance. Safety is a number-one priority. Along with Vice Chair Dr. Lindsay and Board Member Hayes, I attended the most recent safety meeting for our school system. The coordination among our school resource offices, law enforcement agencies, and the administration is good and is always ongoing. And as a grandparent of a student, it makes me happy to see that. This past week, I had the opportunity to visit Butler Stadium Middle School and Butler Stadium Elementary School and see our kids engaged in learning. I saw a lot of happy kids. On the evening of January 11th, Granville County Public Schools held its winter graduation ceremony for 58 graduates from our district high schools. I think that's probably the largest group we've ever had for winter graduation. The Board of Education is so very proud of these graduates and wishes them a wonderful future. On January 19th, we hosted Dr. Katherine Truitt, the North Carolina Superintendent of Public Instruction, at our New Holly Middle School campus. And at the South Granville High School, we were joined by Representative Frank Sossiman, Senator Mayor Will Spodey, county commissioners, Chairman Tim Karen, Russ May, Tony Kozork, Rob Wiliford, and Jimmy Gooch. We visited several classrooms and concluded our tour with an impressive presentation from the virtual enterprise class at South Granville High School. Virtual enterprise classes are a part of the CTE program, which you will hear a little bit more about tonight in our meeting. As you will see tonight, the board and our administration work on two tracks, the current school year and the upcoming school year. Dr. Winborn has already mentioned the joint meeting with our county commissioners, and I will add that the training on the budget process for both boards was excellent. This concludes my remarks, and now we will hear comments from our other board members. Start with you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you. Thank you. I have several reports from committee meetings. I've met with the operations committee, and that went well. We had a lengthy discussion about the calendars that will be presented a little later on in this meeting. And I also had a safety committee meeting. And I would just like to say that I think all of the SROs, or most of them, attended that meeting, and there was some good dialogue about safety issues that goes on throughout this campus. And I do appreciate the hard work that they are all doing and working together to make sure that we keep our campuses as safe as possible. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to share that I also attended meetings with the state superintendent, the safety committee meeting, and I'm also chair of the finance committee. I want to say that I'm very proud and impressed with the manner in which our finance committee is operating, our budget here in Granville County. It's transparent, it's detailed here, and departments have input in what they need. We're trying to work towards a zero balance here. So we're all on target here to make sure that we can keep our school system running as effectively as possible come to our budget here. Also working on the HR intervention innovation committee here, where we're trying to grow our own leaders here in Granville County, trying to come up with money and some budgets so that we can train people who like to become teachers here in Granville County to stay here so we'll not have a shortage each year, but always trying to work with our students here and make sure we have teaching in the classroom. That concludes my comments.
Ms. LeBrett.
Oh, sorry. That's okay. So I had the pleasure of sitting in on the Granville Ed Foundation meeting this afternoon. And the prize patrol recently went around to all of our schools, and I'm pleased to report that they had over $26,000 in grants awarded to teachers across the district. So that's really exciting news. Other things that they were talking about are the Arts in Bloom is going to be coming up, that is April 30th to May 2nd. They are talking about having an online option available this year, as well as the in-person bidding, so just kind of keep a lookout for that. I find that if you want to be the most informed, please follow them on Facebook. They update that much more regularly than their regular website, so just be looking out for that. And also, if you do want to help in donating canvases or any other supplies, they would like those to be donated by February 19th. So, yeah, anyway, you can follow them on Facebook. They're very, very helpful with all of that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Anderson?
Yes, I just want to add too, and someone had already mentioned with regards to that joint session with the county commissioners, as well as, you know, our superintendent, on this budget training, that was totally, totally eye-opening. You know, I don't think I had attended a joint session like that since being on board, but I did express that to everyone at that session, that that was a great, a great training session, and just seeing both work, us work together.
So January is pretty busy, I feel like, along with HR Operations and Policy Committee. I was also able to go stop by the CTE Advisory Council meeting that they had at Granville Central. That is a group of business owners that get together with our staff, I think it's quarterly, to discuss CTE opportunities for our kids. So that is a great initiative, and I'm glad that we're working on expanding our CTE programs and opportunities for our kids. The county commissioner joint meeting was excellent, and I'm really excited about the relationships that we're building with them and working with them going forward. And looking forward, I think February 15th is SRO Appreciation Day. And so I also went to the Safety Task Force meeting, but I also wanted to recognize that our SROs do a lot more than just keep our schools safe. They do some amazing things. They run shoe drives, they run winter coat collections for our kids, they volunteer as coaches for some of our athletic programs. I mean, they are just absolutely amazing individuals that give back to our kids, like, nonstop. They're so awesome. They don't just keep our kids safe at, you know, at school all day. So I'm really appreciative of those individuals. And then also, I wanted to remind everybody that we have our inaugural meeting of our brand-new legislative committee coming up on February 23rd, and that all of our committee meetings are open to the public. And we would love to have people come in and sit and see all of the awesome work that we've been doing lately in our committees.
I do want to mention, in talking about that joint meeting, I failed, and it's apologized profusely. Drew Cummings, our county manager, was there and did an excellent presentation, and two of our own, Ms. Vicki Hines, and my goodness, if I had to answer the questions you could ask about finances, you did a great job. And Courtney Curran as well, on our personnel and HR efforts and supplements and so forth. So we appreciate all that you did at that meeting as well. Thank you. Our next part of the agenda is 3.04, and it's a policy revisions first read. And I hope everybody's had a chance to go through these.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The policy revisions that we have for first reading today are part of our regular policy manual update. And so we are working our way through the 4000s chapter at this time. There are a couple of highlights I'll note for you. The policy 4135, tuition for discretionary admissions, the policy about charging tuition for discretionary admissions, our students who do not live within the boundary of the Granville County schools but ask to be admitted with the payment of tuition. And this policy committee did add or revise some language about students, when tuition would be charged, if a student either they have a plan to move in during the school year, and they can show, for example, they have a contract on a house, or they're building a house and it isn't finished yet, but they will be moving in by December 1st, we would not charge tuition, or if they are living in Granville County and move mid-year, that we would let them finish the year. The policy committee also added something that has been discussed by the board before, which was giving a break to families that have, if they want to enroll more than three children in the same family, which I know has come up at least once, that there would be, we would not charge tuition after the third child. So that's, those are some substantive provisions the policy committee added. The School Board Association also noted that recommended repealing our current policy 4140, appeal of admissions decisions, as just being redundant of information that is already in other policies. There's one thing that I will correct on here. The School Board Association sent us a draft policy 4303, which is here in your materials, but the policy committee actually decided not to bring that one forward to you, just finding that it was unnecessary for the school system. It was an optional policy, and they felt that it was redundant of other information that we have in other policies. So the policy committee recommendation would be that you approve these policies on first reading, with the exception of 4303. Are there questions about any of these policies?
In 4135, you talked about, is it after the third child or the third child?
What we discussed was essentially that the fourth child is free, but it is up to the board.
Okay, so, okay.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve policy revisions as presented in 3.04 on first read. With the exception of...
4303.
4303, thank you.
The policies, the motion has been made in second to adopt policies on first read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, Dr. Frederick. The motion passes. They've been adopted on first read.
And board members, the next set of policies we have here under agenda item 3.05 is the set of 4000s that you reviewed at your last meeting. I don't believe there are any changes since the last meeting. Do note that this includes repealing three existing policies. Again, just because they're redundant, the information's now been consolidated into other policies. And so if the board approves these on second reading, they will go into the policy manual.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made in second to approve the policies on the second read. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Do we need another motion to repeal the other one? Does that need to be considered? I think that that, I would consider that included in the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The next item is public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment? Ms. Curran?
So, Madam Chair, we do not have any online submissions tonight for public comment, but we do have one person who's here in our audience signed up for public comment, and that is Ms. Jackie Olshafer. And again, you'll have five minutes.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
It's good to see all of you. A few months ago, during board member reports, a couple of members mentioned that they were going to become reading buddies at the elementary schools, and I thought it sounded like such a great idea. However, at first, I thought it was just something that the board members were involved in. But the idea that kept coming back to me, so I inquired around and found it was a regular volunteer program. So I decided it was something I wanted to do. Previously, I had considered volunteering, but my husband and I travel a lot, and I know as a teacher, I experienced having someone volunteer, and then you make those plans for them, and then they don't show up. And I didn't want to be that person. Since our schedule for this spring only had us out of town for one week in April, I thought volunteering for the spring semester would work well. So December 18th, I completed the forms for Volunteer Tracker that I found on the school district website. Since I had taught in this state and knew that all my information should be readily available, I didn't anticipate that the process would take very long. But after waiting a month, on January 19th, I decided to call the school that I had chosen to volunteer at and see if they could provide me with an approximate time that it usually takes for Volunteer Tracker to get back to you. The very helpful person who answered the phone said she didn't know, but if I gave her my name and phone number, she would get back to me on Monday, since I called on Friday. I never received a return call, however, and then on January 29th, I finally got an email from Volunteer Tracker saying that I had been approved under Level 3. So the next day, I called the school to set up a time when I could start volunteering. The same person to whom I had previously spoken answered and told me that the principal deals with that, and that she would give her message, she would give her the message, and she could get back to me then. Again, to this date, my phone call has not been returned. After having sat in this room and viewing the test scores two years in a row for elementary students, I couldn't understand why there was no effort to return my call. After pondering a bit, I could only come to two conclusions. Either the students are doing so fantastically in that school that they don't have any students that need any extra help, which I find a little hard to believe, or because I happen to be running for Board of Education, my help wasn't needed. So just to clarify, I want everyone to know that one thing has nothing to do with the other. The timing of the two just happened to coincide. And if nothing else, I feel the courtesy of a return phone call is warranted. Beyond that, I think 42 days to get the okay from Volunteer Tracker seems excessive. It seems since that is their business, it should be timelier. Also, about a week before receiving the acceptance email, I received an email from an organization titled BIB, Background Investigation Bureau, telling me my background report was ready. Already suspecting that it was some kind of scam, I clicked on "Read Your Report," and they asked for all kinds of personal information, including social security number. So from that, I would almost assume that Volunteer Tracker has in some way been compromised and should be informed. So thank you for letting me share and address these concerns.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Olshafer.
Our next item are the consent items, 401, approval of meeting minutes, January 22nd, 24 special meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion's been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is academic success, 501. And Ms. Perry, I believe, will be presenting.
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Good evening, board members. Joining me will be Dr. Felicia Whitaker and Dr. Lawana Norfleet to discuss data, and we'll do our annual review, or monthly review of academic data, behavior data, and attendance data. So we'll start off with the academic data. Tonight, we'll be presenting our comparison data from our beginning of the year to our middle of the year, eye-ready results for grades K through 8. I do want to emphasize that although students may have tested in the fall, or winter, rather, for EOCs, that information is still embargoed until further notice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. Would like to share data from beginning of the year to middle of the year. We're going to share data so that we can see comparisons at all grade levels in literacy and math. So if you take a look at the screen, this is our chart on how we look to see what particular grade level students are on. And as you can see, they were placed in five different levels, either mid or above grade level, early on grade, one grade level below, two grade levels below, or three grade levels below. Next slide, please. So we'll start with eye-ready, middle-of-the-year math. And so when we look at the data, kindergarten, first, and second grade, we will see that overall, we are making progress. We see improvement in each of the primary grades in math. We are happy because we see an increase in a percent of students who are mid or on grade level, and those students who are one grade level below or more, we're seeing a decrease in that. And so that's very promising. Next slide, please. In our three-through-five grade levels, when we look at our middle-of-the-year math, we see the same type of trend where the students who are on grade level or early-on grade level, those numbers are increasing, and there's a decrease of students who, a percent of students who are below grade level. Okay, next slide. So when we look at our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math for eye-ready, again, the same sort of, we see the same trend, smaller increments, but we still see that we are decreasing students who are one grade level below or more, and there's an increase in students who are either on grade level or early grade level.
I do want to add, if you notice, it looks very small, these are very small increases. I want to remark that, remember, we had a number of teachers who began in November, December, well, actually, December, that were international. So they actually just went into those classrooms, and those students, well, they had them for a few weeks after they came back for Christmas, and then these students tested for the middle of the year. So we're still working with those teachers on their instructional practices. We have deployed our coaches to assist those teachers as well. And I would say that if we can get, encourage our students to take these more seriously, particularly the eye-ready assessments, it does flag, the system does flag when students rush through. It kind of has a symbol till if students have not really taken their time and put their best effort in completing the assessment.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. So we move on to reading. So with our eye-ready, middle-of-the-year reading, we see the same sort of trend, but students are doing slightly better in literacy than they are in math, and we contribute that to the fact that our teachers are going through the letters training, and they are implementing a lot of those science of reading strategies into their instruction. But nevertheless, we still see that we are closing gaps. Kindergarten, first, and second grade students, the number of students who began the beginning of the year who were below grade level have decreased, and we're seeing an increase in students who are on grade level or early grade level. Next slide, please. Third, fourth, and fifth grade, we also see that students are improving. Again, they're doing slightly better, third, fourth, and fifth grade, in literacy than math, but overall, in both of those areas, we see that students are beginning to close gaps and become more proficient. And eye-ready for six... And I-Ready for 6th, 7th, and 8th reading. Here, students, again, we see the same trend. It's a little slower in 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, but we are seeing promising results, and it goes back to what Mr. Perry just said, not having those teachers in the classroom the first few months of school, but nevertheless, without those teachers in the classes, we still see that students are showing increase, a slight increase, in those who are on grade level or early on grade level, and those who are not are decreasing. So everything is moving in the right direction. They're small intervals, but we're moving in the right direction, and we're closing gaps, and we're happy to present you with the progress that we're making at this particular time. Okay, thank you.
I want to also add that our schools are preparing tutorial sessions to help these students who are below grade level, so those opportunities are available at our schools. Please, those of you who are listening, if you are interested in tutorials for your students, please speak with your child's teacher or principal about signing up to participate. We have plenty of opportunities available, we want to make sure that everyone's taking advantage of those things that are available.
And how would a community member or former educator go about volunteering in that capacity?
Volunteering for tutorial, this is paid tutorial right now, so we can talk about employment opportunities for those individuals who are retired.
Okay.
Mr. Perry, when tutorial takes place, will the teacher get, print out what they need, how helping is comprehension, or things like that, or just, is that math, help the teacher help improve the students' deficiency?
With the MTSS data, those teachers have opportunities to know where those students are struggling, what areas need to be addressed. Also using the EVOS data that is populated from the end of year results from the previous school year, we have a wealth of data in I-Ready as well to help guide that instruction and provide assistance to teachers with instructional planning, and then our coaches and staff have been working with some power standards with our teachers, and to address those standards or content areas that the students will see at the end of the year on the testing.
Mr. Perry, if I may. Dr. Lindsay, that was a great question. Mr. Perry, can you talk a little bit more? Right now, we're looking at a very top, highest level report in I-Ready. If you were to go in and look at an individual student's report, talk a little bit about what a teacher would see in there for, at a student level.
I'm going to defer to Dr. Whitaker's answer.
Sure.
So when teachers look at students' reports, they can look to see, if you look at those five strands, it will tell them what grade level or where they are on that particular grade level, whether or not they're on grade level, below grade level, one grade level below, two grade level below, or three grade levels below. So they'll get that information. They'll also be able to get specifically what students are deficient in, whatever areas that they need to grow or close gaps. Teachers would get that information. Not only that, they can go click on the student, and let's say, um, I'm a student, and for literacy, I have issues with comprehension. Well, the teachers can click on the student's name, and lessons in comprehension will populate. And so teachers don't necessarily have to produce the lessons, they can print those lessons from I-Ready, and they can use those individual lessons. They can use individual lessons, and they also have group lessons if teachers want to do small group, small group instructions with students. There are also other instructional materials in the teacher toolkit that teachers can use, so it really goes down granually and lets teachers know exactly where students are on grade level, and also standards, what they need additional support with.
Is this taking place during a school day or is it after school tutorial?
Okay, so, what Mr. Perry was talking about just now, he's talking about the after school tutorials that we're about getting ready to implement, but we also have in-school intervention, well, you can call it tutorial, but it's really intervention, and all of our schools provide that because that's a part of the MTSS model, multi-tiered system of support, and so as Mr. Perry said a moment ago, there's a platform that we use, ECATS, it's Early Warning System, and so that's I-Ready, M-Class, all of the diagnostics that we use feed directly into Power School, and Power School feeds into ECATS, and it lets teachers know where students are on all of their diagnostics. And then teachers take that information, and they create intervention plans that they use with students, and those plans are updated each time we do diagnostics, because they can move in and out of groups, the groups are fluid, they don't stay in one group the entire year or semester, they move groups depending on what their needs are.
Do you have one more question? Who sat after school, will transportation be an issue for those kids who can't get home in the afternoon? How's that going to work for those kids?
Each school was allocated a certain amount of money, and they were kind of using that money based on being able to staff the program, and sometimes transportation is a major issue for students, being able to attend, so we do have to rely on parents or guardians to pick students up after school.
That may be a barrier.
So the after school tutoring that you were referring to, that's, parents have to pay separately for that, correct?
No, this is free after school tutorial.
Okay.
Each school has a schedule for the days that they are providing tutorial. Some are starting a little bit later than others because they've noticed that once you start too early, the participation wanes as it gets closer to the end of course and integrate testing, so they try to start a little bit later.
Okay.
That's a very good question. I want to reiterate that this tutoring is free of charge to all families. Thank you for asking that.
And I just asked you because previously, it has not been, so that's, okay, and I'm glad to hear that, so I'm really, thank you.
And that includes any of the boot camps that are held for end of course that are held on Saturdays as well.
Right.
No cost to families whatsoever.
Thank you. So, and I also had, so I can see the, so looking at the difference between the beginning of the year data and the middle of the year data, I can see the gains that we have made, right? But my concern is not that trend, it's the trend from kindergarten to 8th grade, because when we're looking at kindergarten, the kids are one year behind, but when you're looking at 8th grade, the kids are two and three years behind, and when you look at the trend all the way down the chart, the difference gets bigger and bigger every year. And so, do you have any, I mean, do you have any input as to why they keep falling further and further behind? And we're not just seeing that in one grade, you know what I mean? Like, it's a definite trend, when you follow down through the grades, the gap is getting wider and wider.
So our big focus has been to strengthen the core, starting off with just the tier one instruction, making sure that those teachers are teaching the standards and the lessons that are aligned appropriately, so making sure that students have a good basic foundation in that grade level that they're in, and providing the interventions to help to close those gaps, because we don't want to see, continue to see students with multiple years behind, particularly in the middle school, coming from elementary school into middle school. So we're looking at providing highways, being creative with the scheduling for interventions, it's been key, particularly in middle school.
Ms. Hayes, I'll add too. It's staffing has been one of the biggest, I think, difficulties in overcoming this. If you look back over the past several years, COVID, and then the hangover from COVID, where, Ms. Kern, help me, how many, what was our average vacancy last year of core classroom teachers?
Fifty per month.
Fifty core teachers that we, positions we didn't have filled? Obviously, these students are going to be falling behind, so I, this is what keeps me up at night, you know, seeing this. So I'm hopeful that, you know, now that we're getting close to being fully staffed, we can, as Mr. Perry said, concentrate on making sure that the core curriculum, the core standards are being taught, so, because that's the only way they're going to get caught up.
It just, a graph like that terrifies me, because the kindergartners have 12 years, and our 8th graders only have four. And so that's, that terrifies me, because they are literally running out of time to catch up. I mean, I know our staff is working hard, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing, so please don't misunderstand that.
I definitely agree with you.
You know, and I don't, and I don't know what, you know, I'm hoping, hoping and praying that we see those improvements at the end of this year.
We will.
I know this is hard to quantify, but when a kid is behind a few months, a year, and by the time they get to middle school, is there a certain amount of frustration that sets in that makes it even more difficult? Because they're taking different subjects, and every subject requires them to read.
Yes, you know, literacy is the foundation for all of our core subjects, so making sure students can read before the third grade is key, so getting a firm early start, but then we progress until we get into middle school, you have students who are unable to read, they are going to struggle with all the other subjects because they don't have a foundation, a strong literacy foundation.
This is going to be a little outrageous, but, and I think I've brought this up once before, especially for these kids in middle school, have we considered not putting them in electives and doing reading intervention instead? I mean, that terrifies me. I mean, we're looking at, what is that number, 48, I'm sorry, it's a little small from here, 48% in the middle of the year that are still three years behind in reading? I mean, and I love our CTE and our elective programs, do not get me wrong, but when it comes to the difference between entrepreneurship, or PE, or whatever, versus being able to read or write for the rest of your life, I mean, by all means, double down. Put them in reading for two hours, if that's what it takes. I would, everything else is secondary, I mean, just what you said, that's the foundation for everything. I mean, that, and I don't know what the logistics of that would look like, but what are we not willing to do to fix this?
What restrictions do we have as far as what we have to do? As far as offering to a middle school student? Do we have that option?
That's a conversation I'll need to have with the team to discuss those logistics, I can't answer those at this moment.
I have a quick question. So one of the things that is, I guess, challenging is like whenever, when I look at this, I'm looking at grade K, and it's like, okay, they are, you know, they have so much that's going on for them at that point. I guess what I'm failing to understand is like, you know, grade 8, where were they at grade K? Like, is it that they're like losing ground that significantly, or is it that they started from, did they start like with the same numbers approximately as like the current kindergartners, or did they start slightly behind? Do you understand what I'm saying? Like, because that would almost be more helpful as well, is to understand like, how much loss is occurring for those same kids through the grades?
So that data is grouped by cohort, so we'd have to go back and review that individually?
Yeah.
Good question. We'll take a look at that.
I kind of like the idea of trying to replace some electives with some reading enrichment here, but we have to also bear in mind that if a kid starts school behind, then they have a summer called a summer slide, there's two months there, so they start school the next year, two months behind, so it kind of builds, builds, and builds. So that's why it's so important that we can find summer programs, communities get involved, some things, there are churches, you know, because we can't do it, I want to have kids, what, 10 months out of the year? Not, what's, 10 months out of the year? And so, so we need some help in trying to get these kids, the kids being efficient in reading.
Thank you, Dr. Lindsay. That is one of the things that our team has been talking about. We know that it's very important that we also strengthen the instruction that our students are getting in our pre-K program, so we're working on that. We're also diligently out beating the hedges and highways, trying to make sure that those students who are eligible for early childhood can come on into pre-K. Our pre-K teachers, they've gone through letters training, we're providing additional support for them. We started January, and they'll be doing some additional PD to make sure that, just like our K5 teachers, the research and the strategies that they learned last year in letters, that they're implementing that also. So we are trying to strengthen our pre-K programs, and also another thing that's important to keep in mind when we look at the slide of the students, is that, you know, these are COVID students, and so a lot of these students, they did, they were in school during COVID, and there was the COVID slide, and we're making gains as quickly as we can to sort of close those gaps, but, and that's not to make an excuse, but it is something that we definitely need to keep in mind, that we are bouncing back now from the COVID years.
Before we move on to Dr. Norfleet, I'll, and this is actually the perfect segue, if you look at those slides, the students that are populated in those red and pink areas are the same ones that were struggling with attendance and student behaviors. So all these things are connected, you know, and that's a reason why we're paying such close attention to them.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Williams, board members, Dr., I forgot your name that quick, Dr. Winborn. And executive team. And Dr. Winborn is exactly correct. When we look at our attendance data, if our students are not here with us daily, they cannot learn, and so that does contribute to the sliding scale that we're seeing. First, I want to make sure that last month, I promised you that I would share with you who our schools for the month of January were in regards to our best attendance percentage and our most improved attendance. So for the month of January, our best attendance again went to Wilton Elementary School, and our most improved again went to Phoenix. Phoenix continues to climb up the ladder in regards to their attendance rate, so that was for January. Here, we have our month five, and so we took a dip in December, and I gave you those indicators that really impacted our attendance, whether it was COVID, whether it was RSV, or whether it was our high school exams, we're bouncing back. So when we look at elementary, our percentage is up two points from last month. Our middle school, we're up five percentage points. Our high school, this is the big woo-hoo, we're up 16 points, so we're bouncing back. As far as the district overall, we were up seven points. Next slide, please. We want it to be as transparent as we could, and so we want to make sure that we kind of give you this visual to see where we are in regards to meeting our district attendance goal. So if you see across where we have, since we started tracking month one in September, we've had a little dip, but again, we're bouncing back.
Dr. Norfleet, those statistics, data points right there include all absences, correct?
Correct, those are all absences.
All absences.
Correct.
Unexcused and excused.
Yes, and so as promised last year, we said that we would take a deeper dive and look and see where our absences were really dividing between excused absences and unexcused absences. So on the next slide, we broke this down a little bit for you. And again, this goes back to Dr. Winborn's comment in regards to we have to make sure that our students are here, and we are strengthening our efforts each month at our principals' meeting, as well as our counselor and our social worker PLC meetings and strategies to make sure that we are getting students back in the building. But this is the breakdown overall when we look at the difference between the number of excused absences and unexcused absences, and you can see at the bottom, our excused absences are those when we have some form of documentation that supports the student was sick, within illness, medical appointments, educational opportunities, that might be a college tour, that might be a trip that is really tied to the standards, and I emphasize that, because sometimes we do have requests for family trips to be noted as excused absences, but if it's not directly related to our standards, then if a family chooses to take that trip, those absences would be coded as unexcused.
Dr. Norfleet?
Yes.
The elementary number, unexcused, it just sort of shocks me.
So when we look at those unexcused absences, those would be where we have no form of documentation or feedback from the families. We don't know why they were, why they were absent. I will say that we have several of our elementary schools that are doing a wonderful job of reminding parents about the importance of attendance, and also if the student is going to be out, to please make sure that they send in some form of documentation to support it. I want to give a shout out to Buttonhurst Elementary. We were doing some walkthroughs there, and in their front office, right there where you sign in students if they're tardy or late, Dr. DeHagie has a sign right there that says, please remember, I'm paraphrasing, but basically, please remember, you have two to three days to get in a note if your child is absent, that sort of thing. So just those little things are helping us really target our unexcused absences. But overall, again, when we're talking with principals, when we're talking with our student services and PLCs, we're thinking about- our student services and PLCs, we're thinking about ways to really entice students to want to be in our buildings. We want them to have the fear of missing out. So principals are doing a great job with incentives, whether it be, um, attendance incentives or is it linked to their PBIS program where they're really rewarding students. Our social workers are ramping up and having, um, parent conferences where we have, um, attendance contracts that are being completed and we're following through on those. For those families that are still not meeting the mark and making sure that students are coming to school and coming to school on time, we're meeting with them at our district attendance committee. And from there, majority of the time, our recommendation has been to refer on, um, to our district attorney's office for truancy. Uh, we currently have our new district, district attendant specialist in place where she too is going to be, um, making those home visits. So we are making sure that we're making multiple efforts to contact and have those conversations, face-to-face conversations with parents. Next slide? Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions about attendance? Okay, next slide. When we look at behavior, um, again, here are numbers in comparison to January of 2023. Our office referrals were up a little bit. And more specifically, they were up in the, if I recall correctly, they were up in the high school area. Change of the semester, right? And, and sometimes even when we come back in January, sometimes students have to get back in that routine, um, after the winter break. When we look at our overall suspensions, we are down. So what that says is we just needed to kind of remind and reinforce students of the rules after that winter break, um, but we're handling those situations in-house. So our suspensions are down, uh, what is that about 52, 52, um, students in comparison to the previous year? And again, our principals are doing a great job, um, at our schools with our PBIS program incentives and, and really, um, enforcing, um, code of conduct and expectations for student behavior. Any questions? Thank you.
Um, if I, before you continue on, no, you guys can go sit down. It's just more of like a, um, a suggestion, comment sort of thing. As I was going back from in previous years to see if we could reflect on data, like those, um, specifically going back to the, um, middle of year charts and those kinds of things, um, if we can keep those, like make sure that they happen on the same month and in that same format as we go forward, um, so that if we want to go back and look at how those sixth graders are now doing in seventh grade, so that we can track those classes specifically, I feel like that would be really helpful. And just keeping the format the same because it's really complicated to be able to, you know, as different graphs from previous administrators are different and those kinds of things. If we can just keep some consistency, that way it'll be easier for us as board members to go back to previous meetings and, and just kind of double check. That would be great.
Thank you, proceed. Take care of that.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.
I think we have one more presentation from our team this evening, and that is from Mrs. Angie Salisbury. We'll talk more about our CTE program as it is, uh, CTE Appreciation Month. So Ms. Salisbury, team.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Winborn, board members. Happy CTE Month. You have a small token at your places from CTE this month, um, and we want you to celebrate with us. Throughout the month, you will see, uh, social media flooded with CTE and, uh, we hope to have some information in the newspaper and do some program highlights. I am excited to give you an overview of our CTE program this evening. First of all, I want to introduce you to our incredible support staff. We have Ms. Tandra Loftus. She is our CTE Administrative Assistant. Tamara Rotaba is our Career Development Coordinator. Andrea Cooper is our Curriculum and Instructional Management Coordinator. And Peter Ashford is our Special Populations Coordinator. And these folks do an incredible job for our department. So if you would, join me in a round of applause. We have 30 middle school and high school CTE teachers in the district. We offer 22 different career pathways for students to become concentrators. We are proud to say that in 2223, our students earned 2,338 credentials, up from 892 in the previous year. And we are going to probably double that this year. Our students participate in competitions, um, all the way from local and state level to international. And we actually had a VE student on a first place global challenge, uh, international team last year. Next. Most people remember vocational education. While we no longer teach typing or sewing, we are teaching students their way around the kitchen and culinary arts, skills in construction and mechanics, bricklaying and nursing skills. We're also preparing young people for careers in business and computer science and engineering and biomedical research. Our career and technical education program strives to prepare students for careers and post-secondary education opportunities through collaborative, relevant and rigorous learning opportunities, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. CTE students gain experience with durable skills and mindsets needed to pursue the post-secondary plans of their choice. We are very excited to announce a new articulation agreement between the JF Webb High School Project Lead the Way Biomedical Sciences Program and the Vance Graham Community College Bio Process Technology Certification. Basically, one of our high school Project Lead the Way courses is going to count for one of the four courses for this Vance Graham certification. And our students can complete this certification through the Career and College Promise Program. So we are really, really excited about that opportunity for our students. Last year, we invested in Major Clarity, a career awareness exploration and development program for all of our students in grades six through 12. And we were nationally recognized as a platinum power user district for Major Clarity in our very first year. And we can attribute this to pro- program success, to, uh, planning and intentionality for students to complete different parts within the program. Every student in grade six through 12 has access to this and our graduates have a lifetime access for this program. I'm going to say that again. Our graduates have lifetime access to this program for resume building and, um, career searches. I wish that my children had had, had this several years ago when they were in Graham County schools. So two things about Major Clarity that I want to shout to the rooftops for parents and students are there are over 7,000 public and private colleges and university. From very, very small to very large, uh, information about those in this program. And there's over 30,000 scholarships, searchable scholarships, which is huge. If you have ever worked with a young person trying to find scholarships for their interests or, I mean, it's hard to scroll through 30,000, but if you can type in, um, an interest where, uh, in a, a, uh, sortable platform, it is really a game changer. So over 30,000 scholarships here. Last week, we were able to show off our CTE programs to State Superintendent Truitt. She recognized Graham County Public Schools in her report to the State Board of Education. And, and we are proud to say that we frequently are asked by other districts to share information about our fifth and eighth grade truck fare. Many of you have participated in that Careers on Wheels. And people ask us all the time, tell us about that. Tell us how you do that. And we have been asked recently about our, uh, field trips to Vance Graham Community College related to skilled trades. So we partner those field trips for interested students from their CTE classes here at our high schools with, um, business and industry. So they get to go and see the automotive program at Vance Graham Community College and then they get to go to a local, um, car dealership or, um, automotive shop and learn about what people really do with those skills. Finally, we provide students with multiple work-based learning experiences. Students can earn course credit in a CTE internship class. Last summer, we had 18 students work in paid intersh- in internships within our Graham County Public School Programs and Departments in our Grow Your Own Program. And we also had a young man, William Fushi, who finished the North Carolina Triangle Apprenticeship Program, Pre-Aprenticeship Program, um, with Superior Tooling in Wake Forest. He finished that pre-apprenticeship last summer and then was offered an apprenticeship with Superior Tooling. So we are very excited about that. I wanted to share with you, um, just one short story about our, uh, CTE intern there, Anwa Carnes. Anwa Carnes is a senior at Graham Central High School. And what makes her our wow student of the week is that she comes to work when most kids are still sleeping. She works several days a week from four to seven AM at Strong Arm Bakery. So Anwa, tell us about your future plans.
Well, in the future, I hope to become an anesthesiologist. It'll take about eight years of schooling. First will be my pre-med as my undergraduate and then a medical degree for my graduate degree. Um, I've currently applied to University of Virginia, University of Rhode Island, University of Chicago, UNC Chapel Hill, UNC Charlotte, um, NC State University, let's see, let's see, Columbia University, Brown University, Georgetown, tons of places.
Finally, to celebrate the end of CTE Month, in a celebration, we would like to invite you all to a reception honoring our CTE teachers. You should have an invitation in your packets tonight, um, and we look forward to having you there. Are there any questions?
I'm excited. A lot of great things to have in CTE. You're right, I remember Voc Ed at Webb High School, Scunaham and places, um, folks like that, but things have grown so much to keep our kids and to what's going on in our world around here. Thanks for the job, Ms. Barry.
Thank you.
I think the word wow is quite appropriate.
And I have to admit also, this, this just, this is a great program. It is great to let the students see what's out there, what they can do and help them to make a decision on it because there's so much out there.
That's right.
Do you have students that are taking classes to just gain an interest in an area? That type of thing?
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, and, and we have multiple areas and we'd love for students to explore different areas. Uh, one thing that we would like is, and, and I hope that parents who are listening will remember this, uh, 97% of ninth graders who complete a pathway in a particular career area graduate on time in four years. 97% compared to, to just everybody. I think we have an 85% graduation rate. So we really, really want students, they can pick and choose and do some exploring, but once they find something that they like, we really want them to become a concentrator.
Well, with that being said, are y'all going to, uh, the elementary schools to share y'all's plan and how great it is to be CD?
We are, we are. We do, uh, do some fifth grade career awareness kinds of things. And then we also, um, really work with our middle schools on making sure that those students know what's available in terms of pathways at the respective high schools and helping them to see, you know? It only takes lots of times, two courses, to be a completer in a pathway. And so we really want students to complete a career pathway. Any other questions?
Um, when we offer these CTE programs, are kids able to participate in programs outside of their attendance zone school?
So if they have done the, um...
So if you have a kid that goes to Graham Central and they want to be a Mason, can they go participate in the Mason reading program at JF Webb?
We have traditionally not done that.
Currently, we, we, we don't have cross enrollment with our high schools, but that's something we've talked about and the barrier there, of course, is transportation.
Because these are amazing programs and what I really want to see is all of the amazing programs being offered as opportunities to every single one of our, our students. So when I walk into a school and I see this huge shop with these brand-new tractors and these amazing $10,000 engines that these kids get to take apart and put back together every semester, the thing that breaks my heart the most is that we're not providing that at every single one of our schools. And I would really love for us to be able to do that.
Right. So what we do try to do with CTE and those engines in that, um, Ag Mechanics Small Engines program, course that you saw, is provide it at least at two of the three traditional high schools. So we do have that program at two of the high schools, just not at the third one. Whereas we have animals, for instance, at two of the three traditional high schools. So we do try to balance out to ensure that equitably, there are opportunities, maybe not the same opportunity, but different opportunities everywhere.
If you had to pinpoint something specific, what would you say is the major barrier that's holding us back from being able to provide the exact same opportunities at every single one of our high schools?
Staffing.
So resources.
Resources.
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, both staffing and, um, materials, you know? Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salisbury. Our next item is fiscal responsibility. Ms. Hines?
Good evening, board members. We're gonna, um, start this evening with, um, just an informational item regarding our mileage reimbursement rate. In April of 22, the Board of Education, um, agreed to allow us to, after having a, a static, uh, reimbursement rate for many, many moons, um, we had, the Board of Education allowed us to move to the state rate, um, which in turn is the federal rate. rate, which in turn is the federal rate determined by the IRS. And that changes every January 1st. So just wanted to inform you that as of January 1st, mileage reimbursement in the district is moving up to 67 cents per mile. So again, informational item. Any questions about that? The next agenda item is related to our budget amendments for the month. Our first budget amendments are for our state fund. You can see that we have, additional funding came in from the state. We get our later allotments after our original allotment. Our increase in funding totaled $396,000, just over $396,000. And that included our behavioral support allotment, CTE, speaking of CTE, our CTE credential allotment, digital literacy intervention, parent engagement. We also received our actual breakdown for our restart schools. And so that changes our, it increases our total state budget to $54,739,746. For our local fund, we, there was no change, increase or decrease to our overall budget. We were simply adjusting school-based budgets, allocating funds for school clubs, and adjusting for consolidation. And so our local budget has, is unchanged. Our federal grants, we updated funding for CTE as well as for exceptional children and a pre-K adjustment. That we increased the federal budget by $84,000, just over $84,000. So our federal budget total currently is $18,566,000, $566,029. Our capital outlay budget amendment, again, no change, increase or decrease to our overall budget. It is simply to correct our budget of our county-held funds to match the county budgets. It's basically a change in the legal and financing fees that they have record. So no change to that. And then our other restricted fund, or what we call Fund 8, we have an increase of 30, just over $36,000, which includes donated funds for recruitment and retention, a textbook donation, adjusting budget for Medicaid, and new activity bus tags, and a good amount of recycling revenue, and just adjusting a revenue source. So our final Fund 8 budget is $5,885,687. Any questions about those budget amendments? These come to you for your approval.
Motion to approve the budget amendments as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and second to approve as presented. On paper?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Motion's passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
I'll go with you. That's fine. I know you miss seeing this report. This is our monthly COVID report. This is our, these are our ESR dollars, our COVID funding. And again, this is that summary of funds. Note that we have $6,322,000 funds remaining, and of course, all of these funds do expire on September 30th. Many of these funds are specifically for summer programs, but we are diving into each of these funds to make sure that they are expended by year-end as much as possible. And again, this is the regular report that you get from the state. This is also available on the DPI website, but is provided for you monthly as required. Any questions about that? For truck? Thank you. And again, this is your monthly statement on board travel. We say board travel, but it's really focused on professional development. And I do want to point out that currently, we are over budget. We knew that was coming. I do want to pose to you as, you know, just food for thought moving forward, that we are, for the last two years, we've spent that additional $1,500 on the video subscription, and just want to mention that to you, so we can look into usage of that resource to see if that's valuable, if that's providing the value that it needs to. But however, we have, we've already entered a budget amendment, so you guys are covered. Your budget is covered, but just wanted to point that out to you. And we had also discussed earlier on that we would look to see if some of that video subscription, if other staff members were using it, then it is appropriate to use other staff funds to do that. So we're gonna look into that usage to see what that's been looking like. Any questions about that? All right. Thank you. And this is our monthly budget review. Note that this is as of the end of December, December 31st. At that point, we're approximately 50% through the budget year. And that top section, our local budget, we're on target for that, as well as our state funding. So I'm pleased with where we're heading with that. Our federal budget, of course, the rest of our funds don't necessarily have to be in line and won't be in line, because we have some additional funds with federal and our other restricted budgets. And you can continue. You can see that we're well on our way. You can scroll on up to our capital funds, capital outlay, we're at 51%. And again, you know, go back to what we talked about last month, we have that $2.7 million remaining in capital outlay. Remember that 1.7 of that is actually focused on HVAC and roofing needs through the county. And then, of course, we have community schools and child nutrition. I'm excited about that child nutrition budget with our recent community eligibility provision. We're excited that our students and families, or our students are gonna be receiving free meals as of February 1st. So we appreciate your support with that. Not only is it helping our families and our students, that's the most important thing, but it does help their budget as well, which is also important to me. Very good. Any questions about the budget review? The final item we have is just our budget update for the '24-'25 budget development process. Much of this is a review of our joint meeting. I just feel like it's important for us to share that with the general public, anyone who might have missed that joint meeting. Budget challenges that we're looking for, we're looking forward to these in '24-'25. We know that ESR or COVID federal funding cliff is coming. That funding ends on September 30th. That means positions, that means programs, bonuses for staff, there's a lot that's wrapped into those ESR dollars. And our directors have been looking very closely, we have all been looking very closely at that funding, to see what needs to continue. Another area that is going to be a challenge is those increasing costs. We know that our salaries, based on the state, the second year of the state biennial budget, we're looking at a 4% to 7% increase in salaries, retirement, we're expecting a significant increase, and we know that our health insurance matching has increased, will increase by 7%. We know that utilities are increasing, materials and the cost of services are increasing as well. So we just have to keep that in mind as we're moving forward. And as we have talked about over and over again, our continued competition with our surrounding counties in terms of our students and in terms of our staff. And so we know that that's a big challenge that we have, is to focus on that retention of both our student and staff. Next slide, please. And as we're looking forward to developing this budget, we talk about buffering the cliff. We know we have to figure out a way to maintain as much as we can and deal with this cliff that we're facing. We are really focused on maximizing our efficiency and how we're using our funding. And one of the ways we're doing that is really focusing on that zero-based budget. We're really looking at our discretionary funds that we have available, which is, we recognize, a small portion of our budget, but it is a hefty portion of our budget, that we have, we have some discretion on how we use those funds. So we, departments are, have been looking very closely at their budgets and are making some changes. Next slide, please. And this is where we are. Departments were due to have their budgets in by this past Friday, and senior staff is starting that process to kind of dig through that and begin to process what those requests are and how it relates to the funds that we have available. We'll be meeting with the Finance Committee later in February, and I'm expecting to have a budget proposal to you guys at the March Board of Education meeting for your review. And then we are scheduled with the County Commissioners on Friday, March 8th, to present and hopefully submit at that time. Next slide, please. So just wanted to summarize the priorities we've noted so far. And this is kind of based on what we know, again, those challenges that are coming. We know that we have that decompression plan. We've heard about that for years now, that decompression plan. We've got that three-year agreement with the County Commissioners, and this is the final year for them to increase based on that decompression plan. That's based on that $15 an hour minimum wage. We have our general continuation funds, that's our locally funded employees, those increases in salaries and benefits. We are, one of our priorities is, again, as we've talked about, recruitment and retention of staff. We would like to, part of what we did with ESR dollars is continue to support our school-based, our classroom-based teachers with an additional 2% supplement. And we'd love to see that continue. We also were able to support with advanced degree pay, and we'd love to see that. As Dr. Winborn said in his earlier remarks, that is a priority of this district, to continue that support. And of course, we know that we have capital needs in our buildings, and it is, you know, we definitely need, are asking for additional support for those capital needs. And of course, that leaves out our departmental requests. You know, I'm assuming that I've, we've gotten several departmental requests coming in as well. So we're gonna be revising our budgets and looking and seeing what we can support internally. And that's important, you know, that's a lot, our priorities right there, that, those are a lot. But again, what we're looking at first is internally, can we work our budgets? Can we decrease and refocus our needs and our funding to where those needs are? And that's what we're working on. So we've got a couple, a couple very long weeks, short weeks, but very long weeks before we get that information to you. Next slide, please. That's where we are. Do you have any questions about the budget process, anything you would like me to look at specifically beyond that?
I have one question. When we submit the budget to the County Commissioner in March the 8th, how would they take them to receive our requests or tell them we can't give us what we're asking for?
They actually, they're requesting the budget from us in March. They actually have a longer process, because they're looking at all of their county requests. So they will, I believe, it was May to June, and that's pretty typical, that we typically don't hear until early June from them about our request. But I think their goal is May, but it could be June. That's pretty typical. Any other questions?
I'd just like to take a minute and thank you, Vicki, and the senior staff, and all of the department heads that have really been stepping up with this aggressive timeline. I know it's been a heavy lift, and just want to thank everyone for the extra attention they're giving to this, because it's new. It's a new way of doing things, and I'm hopeful that it will pay off.
It is. I appreciate the department.
No pun intended.
Yes, yes. I appreciate the department heads especially. I know this has been a huge change in a very busy time of year, so I appreciate their efforts in getting this information and really digging in.
Mr. Bill Graham.
Hey, everybody.
Hello, Mr. Graham.
I would like to begin by saying, one of the changes that we've sort of seen over the last year or so is the increased emphasis with work on the committees. And I would like to say that with this particular item, that is something that has paid off, I think, hugely, because the Operations Committee has sort of been dealing with this for quite some time, and I really appreciate all of you, former and current members of the Operations Committee, that we have spent a lot of time discussing this in one way or another. So I really appreciate all of your efforts. I had, just go back to the title, I had six sort of exhibits, and I don't intend to go over all of them. I'm sure you were able to access them. I just want to go through really the overview of the slides, if that's okay with you. I'm happy to entertain questions if you have them, and you can look at those later. So, each year, the Board approves the academic calendar for the following year, and we are asking you to approve two calendars this evening, the traditional calendar and the early college calendar now. There's a process for how the calendars are developed and brought to you for your consideration. For the traditional calendar, a calendar committee consisting of the principal of the year, the teacher of the year, representatives from curriculum instruction, testing, student data, and operations, met in October. Just prior to that meeting, we sent out a survey asking staff about their opinion regarding spring break, workdays, balanced versus unbalanced semester, just to get some talking points. But that calendar committee met in October to sort of begin the process. That committee then developed three calendars. Surveys were sent to both the staff and then parents to rank their order of preference of these three calendars that were developed. The process, along with the three calendars and the feedback from the parents and staff, was shared with the Operations Committee in December. At that time, the decision was made to wait just a bit before bringing it to the full board. Meanwhile, we received support from elected, input from elected officials, and those were attached as exhibits. Mr. Saucerman and Mr. Karen chimed in with their support for their opinions on that. The Operations Committee then considered the same information again in January and decided at that meeting that they would consider two of the options at tonight's meeting. Those are options A and B, which are provided for you as exhibits in the board docs. Okay, next slide, please. So the next two slides represent, they show you the results of the surveys that were sent out to parents and staff. So this is the teacher survey, and it's first choice, second choice, and then option three, you know, option one, option two, option three. Option one, calendar would be what we have currently. Option two is a calendar in which the semesters were even, and what that means is exams would occur after the winter break. And then option three was a calendar, you know, that showed local flexibility and an early start and a later, I mean, earlier start, earlier... local flexibility and an early start and a later, I mean, earlier start, earlier finish because there was a lot of conversation that that might be, you know, something that we might want to be half-ready. So, these are the results. And you can see that the first choice, which is the blue bar overwhelmingly, was for the third option, which is the local flexibility. Mr. Connor, the next slide. So, this next slide is the results of the parent survey. And you can see that, once again, the parents sort of overwhelmingly preferred the local flexibility option, which, what that boils down to is an earlier start and an earlier finish. So, next slide, please. All right. So, you have before you to consider two options for traditional calendar for next year. The early college calendar is tied very closely with or directly with Van Scramble Community College Calendar. So, Principal Harris and Mr. Newton there, they provide us with the calendar that works for them. And we provide that to you to adopt. So, this evening, we are asking for approval of one of the traditional calendars as well as the early college calendar. And I will tell you that the work of the committees has been extraordinary, and I'm very appreciative of all their work. So, that's what I have to provide to you, board. You talk amongst yourselves and have at it. At that, I could sit down and hide behind there and talk to the microphone over there.
I would like to point out, you said there was a letter from Commissioner Karen, but in the letter, it clearly states that it's the support from the entire board, which I think is so profound that
Yes.
all of our commissioners support
Agreed.
calendar flexibility
Agreed.
and doing what's best for Granville County students.
It was notable to me. Yeah, thank you for pointing that out.
And board members, I've provided some information about the calendar law. I know that you are aware that currently, state statute says that you cannot start school before the Monday closest to August 25th. I think you know that other districts have done so. And if you have questions about that, we can certainly also discuss it in closed if you need to and then bring it back after closed. I will leave that to you.
I would like to make a motion to approve the traditional calendar option B for the district and the Granville County early, Granville County Early College High School calendar as presented in 7.01.
Second. Motion's been made in second. Do we have any more discussion?
Yes. While I agree with your motion, I think I haven't had time to give you all the information that I've asked of my attorney on whether you all have or not. But I would like to address this, too. I've had a chance to ask her some questions or talk to her about this. I think it's something that we could do in those days.
I'm sorry, just for clarification. So, you want to just postpone it until after closed session?
Yes.
Is that all you're asking?
Until the end of tonight's meeting.
I mean, that would be my
Yeah. I don't have any problem with that.
I think for, see, for all this information that we haven't had a chance to decipher. And I know there's a lot of concerns out there about what's going on in Raleigh about the calendar and that kind of thing. Even though there was like 12 or 14, maybe 16 systems that's doing it. My real question, and I guess I'll ask in further session, I don't want to do it out here. Well, it's a law year thing.
Do we need to table it or do we need to
So, that, if you are, if you, if you sort of take that as a friendly amendment to withdraw your motion, and is there consensus, I guess, to postpone the vote until after closed session tonight?
Sure.
Mr. Graham, you off the hook, not now.
Right now. Thank you all.
Thank you. Human Capital Management, Ms. Karen, is going to share with us.
Do you think? So, I told you in our prior meeting in January that I would be bringing the Teaching Fellows Pilot Plan tonight. And so, we have done work in our Human Resources Innovation Committee to kind of hone in on what we really want this to look like for Granville County Public Schools. And so, I have a plan to present to you tonight. If the plan is approved, then I will submit it to the North Carolina Teaching Fellows, and we could get the funds as early as the very beginning of March. So, next slide. Teaching Fellows Organization gave us our overarching goal, so that was easy. It is to create a pipeline of North Carolina Teaching Fellow applicants and potential teachers to provide opportunities for potential teacher candidates to engage in teacher preparation courses and pursue teaching licensure in an approved educator preparation program. You often hear that called an ed prep program or an EPP, and encourage teacher candidates to return to work in Granville County Public Schools. And so, next slide. We have three separate goals within that overarching goal. The first one is to promote the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program to produce at least 10 applicants annually. I want to be clear that it says promote. We are not bound and absolutely dead set that we have to have 10 applicants every single year for the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program. But that is a goal of ours, is that through this program, they will funnel into North Carolina Teaching Fellows, which does give them opportunities for scholarships at partner universities in North Carolina. So, we will do that through flyers, packets that we'll send home to our Teacher Cadet students, and packets to our classified staff members because our classified staff members are eligible for the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program if they are already a student in a educator prep program. So, if they are already in the process, then they can apply for the North Carolina Teaching Fellows and possibly secure that scholarship. And then, of course, we'll use our social media marketing. Our second goal is to develop and implement a grow your own program for students. We have already started that a little bit in our schools with the Teacher Cadet Program right now. It is at Granville Central High School. That is where we could find a teacher who was willing to teach it for us. So, we started at Granville Central High School, but we would like to expand that to all three of our traditional high schools over the course of this program. If we see success with the North Carolina Teaching Fellows Program this year, we can extend it out through 2027. So, that would give us an opportunity to build that in the program. We also would like to expand the prospective teacher scholarship that we can offer for our students. And so, we can use the $55,000 that comes with that to help us expand those scholarships and give more students opportunities. Our current prospective teacher scholarship does require students to come back and teach with us. So, that would just help us to get more teachers. We do expect that that would run about $25,000 with the salaries for the teachers to teach that course. And there are some internship opportunities that come with Teacher Cadet that would allow teachers to kind of go through that process. And then, the expansion of the prospective teacher scholarship would be about $7,400 that would be part of that process. The third goal would be to develop and implement a grow your own program for our staff members. Currently, in North Carolina, teacher assistants already have an opportunity to get reimbursed for tuition through the TA-to-teacher pipeline. But our other classified staff members who are interested in being teachers do not. And so, the committee felt very strongly that they would like to see our other classified staff members who are interested in being teachers have an opportunity to get scholarships. So, they'd like to expand the prospective teacher scholarship in that area so that our classified staff members who, let's say that we had a receptionist, because we do have a receptionist in one of our schools, who's interested in being a teacher and is already in a program, she would qualify for this scholarship now. So, it would be, also give us the opportunity to provide professional development for our staff members who are classified staff members, who would like to be teachers one day during the school year. And that would be about $21,800 to expand the actual scholarship. And then, we only think it'll cost us $400 per PD. So, we wanted to spend as much of this funding on actually building our programs and providing scholarships as possible. We are aware that the funding is not guaranteed beyond 2027. And so, we'd be very conscious about how we distribute those funds. They do run calendar year. So, it would be from now till December that we would have to spend the first $55,000. And then, through 2027, we'd have the calendar year as well. So, next slide. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have a question. It has to do with the prospective teacher scholarship. What do we do as a system to encourage people to know about it, to explain? Because lately, we haven't had, I think the last time we had one person that applied for it. And over the years, I mean, some of the years, we didn't have anybody.
So, we already give information out to all of our guidance counselors, and they share that information with their students. But we are going to also target those Teacher Cadet students who are in that pipeline program and send home packets of information to share with their parents and to share with them about this opportunity. So, our goal is by recruiting students into Teacher Cadet, we can then recruit them also for that prospective teacher scholarship.
Thank you. Because over the last 14, 15 years, we've had that program, and we've used it very little, really.
But this year, we do have 12 students in that Teacher Cadet class, and they just started recruiting at the end of December. So, we're very hopeful that that will be helpful.
Thank you.
I just want to say, there was like 100 ideas thrown out at that committee meeting, and you did such a lovely job of narrowing it down to like three concise goals. That was so much easier to understand.
Well, thank you.
I was a little overwhelmed when we left. I was like, that was a lot. So, thank you.
It's my job.
Nice job, Ms. Graham.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate all the work of the HR Innovation Committee. We really had a lot of people give us ideas, and we appreciate everything that was brought to the table. And really also appreciate the focus on our classified staff members.
We need to make a motion.
I was going to say, I'd like to make a motion to approve the NC Teaching Fellows Pilot Plan as presented.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve it as presented by Mrs. Karen. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'll submit it tomorrow morning.
Okay. We're going to take a motion to adjourn for closed session, and we'll come back in for that after about a 10-minute break.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We're now back in open session. The first item of business is to vote on the approval to, of the certified and classified personnel as was presented in the closed session. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Can we amend to include the administrative positions?
And include.
And to include administrative position.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimously approved. Okay. The next item is the item from the Agenda 701, the district calendar. We, you will recall that we had questions with the attorney, and we came back, and we are going to discuss it now or make some motions. Do we have a motion, or does anyone have any more discussion?
Does the motion still stand from earlier?
It was withdrawn, but you could make it again.
Okay. How did I? Motion to approve
Option B.
Option B for the traditional district calendar as well as the Granville County Early College High School calendar as presented in 7.01.
Second.
Second.
Motion's been made by Mrs. Hayes and second by Mr. Peace. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next is upcoming events and announcements. We have a tour of Phoenix Academy on February 7th, February 12th, policy committee meeting, 9 o'clock, operations committee meeting on the 14th, and finance committee meeting on the 20th, 23rd, our first Board of Education Legislative Committee meeting, and then back on March 4th, 2024. And I think there's another committee meeting somewhere in here. Is that the HR committee meeting? That's this Friday.
The academic is coming up next. Wednesday.
Thursday.
What, okay. The academic committee?
Yes, academic committee's the 15th.
15th. I think that got settled after the agenda went out. Okay. And the HR is Friday. Friday at 1:00. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Aye.
Motion has been made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you for your hard work tonight.